At 6:00 PM, Dr. Over.
Thank you, Ms. Sheeran. Good evening to the McGuffey Board of Directors, Administration, and three members that are in attendance this evening. I have four in for this July committee meeting. First, our updates are made yearly and typically around this time in the summer. After a few months of looking at the student handbook by our building administration, administration team, tonight, we have up for the board to review and approve both the high school and middle school student handbook, as well as a joint effort on the elementary. So tonight, we have Mr. Bonus, high school principal, present on the high school handbook. And then after that, I'll ask Mr. Wolf, who plays well to introduce us to the updates on the student handbook for elementary. Mr. Bonus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are we good? Yeah, we're good. We just have several, I think relatively simple changes to this year's high school student handbook. That's a working document, so we bring changes as necessary each year. Some of them are large. Sometimes when we have a major policy change, other years, you have less. But in terms of operations and things like that, the things that come up during the school year that we need to address for next year to make sure they're in writing. So the first couple of changes are just sort of date changes and page number changes. We've added some things to our testing calendar, which include our pre-NOCTI program. We're going to start administering a pre-NOCTI for our CTE programs housed here at school, just like the students at Western Area take. Just a way, and our pre-NOCTI, and our NOCTI scores are very good. We just want to keep them that way. We're in excess of 90% continually in our general agriculture, ag mechanics, and engineering technologies. So it's just a way to sort of give them that brief exposure to the content that they're going to be facing when the NOCTI counts for real in April. Previously, they gave it in May, and they got changed to April. So, one, the addition of a pre-NOCTI, and two, the change of the NOCTI from May to April. So that's what that is. Just for dress codes, for dress code, we do have one change. There's been some situations across the country where people, and not this has been a problem here, but people have, once in a while, you'll read about like an adult that came into a public school, sort of, you know, maybe they have 500 kids or 1,000 kids or something. They stayed throughout the day, and they've been arrested because, you know, nobody really saw who they were. Obviously, that's a problem. So for security purposes, we wanted to put in terms of the dress code is that we need to be able to save you. So if you, you can't like wear, and I don't think these are really necessary, but you can't wear masks and things like that, and you can't keep your hood up and wear sunglasses. We need to see who you are as a way of making sure everybody's here who needs to be here. I mean, just once in a while, like I said, I just came across that. In New Jersey, there was an adult person who just came into a school and sat in some classes, and they found out by the end of the day, but you want to make sure you can see who the students are. I think that's sort of like a fundamental idea about making sure the place is safe. The next one is making sure students are aware that we have installed vape detectors in some of our boys' and girls' restrooms up here, and know that they are present, and it just says they're present in student classrooms, or, excuse me, student restrooms, and will be used to detect violations of tobacco, nicotine use, and controlled substances. So just sort of like, you know, where you see the sign where it says video surveillance, just giving people heads up that, you know, this is a change since last year that we installed these. Just as a way of making sure students understand that, and their parents have been made aware of that through the student handbook. We added esports. The next one, we added esports to our list of activities. The next one is we're going to be moving to an e-Pass system in the high school. Typically, the students need to change class. Teacher will sign them a pass and to go to this room, name, date, time, whatever. Yeah, they can still use that, but we're going to move to an e-Pass system, which basically works on an active spreadsheet throughout the day, so that, yeah, we think it's going to be a little bit better, so that we can sort of have a better account during the day where students were at.
And that would give then the administration and security a better idea of who's where throughout the day, correct?
Yes. How many times throughout the day, and sort of student movement, and it keeps like a live document. They've been using this in the middle school with much success, and I sort of said, well, go ahead and use it, and let me know how it goes. Work out any of the issues that you may have over in the middle school.
And now they've worked out the tweaks.
Yeah. Now, we've worked out, I think, what a very good job, very good strategies to facilitate that during the day at the high school, so we're ready to move towards that. So that's just language. It says, if a teacher still needs to get a student from the cafeteria or such, then they can write them a pass, you know. But for the most part, we're going to rely on the e-Pass system through the day. And I anticipate that they're going well. We trialed that 13th period last year, and it worked very well. Then we polled the staff, and they were very supportive of it. They liked the idea of it. Once they got used to it. We added language about flexible instruction days here. Since we have flexible instruction days, not knowing that we'll use them, but since that's sort of, that we've applied to the PDE and received them for the following year, about expectations with attendance. Alls that we do is ask them to sign in using a Google link in order to be counted present for that day, or they could call in if they don't have maybe digital access that day. Well, sometimes, you know, they don't do that, and then they say, well, you know, as many times as we tell them, and then we send it to their student email. So they can know, we give them a one call, go on your, the district webpage and sign in. Here's it sent to your student email. You can call in, like, here's opportunities to do that. Some don't do it, and they still, they miss the date, and they get counted absent, and they're very upset because of like, like what they're doing. We gave you, like, notice three different ways in which to do this. So we're doing as much as we can, but we just wanted to sort of firm up the fact that we have to count you absent if you don't do one of those. So we included information in the handbook, just so they know that's, that's sort of our process for that. And that hasn't changed. It's been the same. I think that's it. That's it for this year's updates to the high school handbook. Does there anybody have any questions?
I was just thinking that.
Somebody told me Dan broke the record, so I'm no longer, I'm no longer Dan.
He did.
You can't throw more than a bus.
Well, it was like two hours, right?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate pre-notification to parents.
Sure.
And the handbook's a great way to do that, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we don't look to punish. We don't look to use these tools to punish. We look to use them to inform. But believe me, we're very flexible. Like, we try and, you know, if you didn't get it right this time, we'll try and get it right the second time. But things with attendance, we have sort of school code issues that we have to follow along with. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Wolf from the elementary.
I might be a little shorter than, I won't hold that title. I'll make sure that Dan or Mr. or Mark Bonus gets that title for sure. Elementary student handbooks, very basic. We just updated personnel, updated the McGuffey School District calendar, and the breakfast. We just updated the start date. Sometimes, parents are confused of when it starts. Breakfast starts the first day. So, and we also updated the prices, but they stayed the same. Hopefully next, hopefully this year, we haven't got word, but last year, breakfast was free. We're hoping that they have that same, same privilege again this year. So, but nothing has come out yet, so until that time, we just have to go forward with the pricing. Two of the major ones, one, we have, we updated the therapy dog. Now, in the original, had, we were very lucky to have Gus. Gus is with Ms. Painter. But with that, we also have Phoebe, and Phoebe is our other therapy dog. And so it reflected just for Gus, so I had to update it and just made it general. So that was our big thing on that one. The other one that we wanted to shore up was our transportation procedure for bus passes. Because of the pandemic, we, there were no bus passes, and we saw that we just wanted to be consistent and clear. And sometimes, they have to move, but we wanted to reflect that verbiage across the board on the website, as well as the handbook. So that's all we have. So, you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to all administrative teams, both at high school, middle school, and the elementary. So we appreciate that. Next, this is truly a labor of love that started really two years ago, when, as a district, we undertook the process of looking at a core resource for math. And of course, as we know, this past year, we've adopted a core resource for English Language Arts. Today, Dr. Gotrin is here to present to the board the curriculum to adopt for ELA. And I would say, and I'm sure you'll get a little bit more of this, but I would say that not just a labor of love, but a commitment that I've just been so proud of and impressed by, the teachers at all the levels in McGuffey, Dr. Gotrin, the administrative team. I'm excited for him to make this presentation. I'm excited for how we're going to move forward in mathematics. So, Dr. Gotrin.
Awesome. Well, good evening, everyone, first off. And just so, you know, to make sure Mr. Bonus leaves happy, we'll, we'll try to be shorter than the ELA presentation tonight.
We'll limit our questions.
Yeah. Yeah. This, this one's a little, little more straightforward, a little briefer than last time, but, but has been very much a process, and I appreciate Dr. Over illustrating that. It has. It was, it was two years ago, and what a fast two years it's been, that the math team kind of initially formed and did some work with IU1. And as we did everything, of course, with the resource selection, we also were beginning the process of the curriculum itself, and kind of learning as a team and educating, you know, all of our teachers on, when we talk about curriculum, here are the things that it includes. And, you know, curriculum is not just the resource we use, or it's not just the scope and sequence of the, of the content, right? It's, it's, and we'll actually get to the definitions of curriculum in a moment here, but I also, before I jump into it, I want to give lots of credit to both the math team specifically, of kind of the sampling of teachers that have been alongside since the beginning. And it was actually the 2021, 22 school year that that team put the seeds of this together and kind of did the groundwork of, here's, here's what we expect from the document we want to end up with. Here's how we think it can be accessible, collaborative. And so without, you know, any further ado, and I do want to thank all of the teachers, because once the math team kind of set the table, this school year just concluded, has been the time when all of the teachers, K to 12, anyone involved in the mathematics classroom, had a hand in what you're about to kind of, kind of hear a little bit about. So, Mr. Wolf, if you'll, or is it, is it Dr. Wolf yet, or is that after next week?
Thursday.
Thursday. Next, after next Thursday, it'll be Dr. Wolf. So, so first off, and I started to talk about this a little bit in introducing, so when we talk about curriculum, and I said, we all, we all have knowledge of what curriculum is, but it's like, everyone's an expert in curriculum, but then also everyone thinks of one specific component of curriculum. And so if you look, so the top one there is a research definition, and it says, "Curriculum is the planned and guided learning experiences and intended learning outcomes formulated through the systemic reconstruction of knowledge and experiences under the auspices of the school for the learner's continuous and willful growth and personal social competence." So what I, what I've said to the teachers jokingly, but not jokingly, is I said, so curriculum is everything we do, except for transportation and facilities. And I'm glad, because those are two areas that I'm really glad we've got Mr. McKee and Mr. Wilson. But curriculum really is encompassing, right? It's the courses that are taught in the school. It's the academic standards that we have for our students to meet. It's the way that we assess. It's so much of what we do. And we tend to think of like, the most visible parts of curriculum, like we think about the textbook, or we think about that scope and sequence map that, that, you know, is available for the teachers, or we think about the lesson plan. And, and curriculum is all of those and more, I guess, is what I'd like to kind of emphasize today, is that curriculum is what we live and breathe, especially in my, in my sense, right, because of what I get to do every day and really, truly enjoy doing every day. And so that bottom bullet is McGuffey's policy kind of definition of what curriculum is. And you can see, it's very similar to the research definition, and it says, "Curriculum is the planned learning activities, such as the courses of study, subjects, classes, organized group activities provided by the school." And so with that definition kind of spelled out, Mr. Wolf, if you'll go to the next one. So, like I said, there is a lot of components that, when we say curriculum, it's important to all be on the same page of which curriculum are we talking about? Are we talking about the lesson plan? Are we talking about the core resource we're using? Are we talking about the curriculum document that, right, that's here tonight for approval? And so that photo on the right, or the left, depending which way you're looking at it, I guess, never mind if you're facing it, it's to everyone's right, unless you're looking backwards or something. The picture on the right is, that is the world record for the most Jenga blocks stacked on a single block. And I just think it's super cool, and I hope that my children never see that and try to attempt that world record, because here's what would happen. Guy would start building it for the world record. Samantha would come in and knock it down halfway, and then the rest of my evening is shot by trying to address that situation. But just like the Jenga blocks, right, when we talk about our written curriculum document that's approved, and when we talk about the planned curriculum that our teachers plan for their instruction, and we talk about the curriculum that's actually delivered, and we talk about the curriculum that's assessed, whether it's a local assessment, a benchmark, state assessment, whatever the assessment may be, the goal is for those to line up with each other as much as possible. And if you think about that from like, just anything we do in life, right, like if you're on a, if you're in a ballgame, right, and if Coach Dalton has a playbook, and right, that's his written playbook, but then when they're at football camp out in the heat, the kids are practicing different plays than what's in Coach's playbook, right, then, then that's not going to be a very successful season, most likely, right? Your goal is for, for your, your items of curriculum to be in coherence with each other. And kind of what we had, had found with previous approaches to curriculum, right, like some of the, some of the things that were missing, or that we wanted to try to improve upon, was there were written curriculum documents, right, housed in Ed Insight, and teachers had been involved in that, and teachers were aware of that. But I would say not as much as we should were people accessing those documents as a regular part of their planning. They, they were probably looking, looking up standards maybe on the SAS portal, which is a great thing. It's a great resource. But then, the scope and sequence, the order in which they were putting those standards, might not have necessarily reflected what we actually put in our written document on Ed Insight. And so then, of course, if you are trying to deliver curriculum, but your lesson plan and the written document that the district is basing its, its instruction on, or, even if they're slightly out of line, right, that's, that presents some challenges and some problems. And so one of the goals of all of this was to be more cohesive and more aligned. And so, yes, perfect timing, Mr. Wolf. And so we set out, again, starting during the 21, 22 school year, and I was actually laughing as I was putting this together, because one of the documents is still titled, "March 2022 Curriculum Document," because it was spring of 2022 that we sat down as a math team, and we said, okay, how does this look like if we're going to get it right? What's important? What are the priorities? And so during that, you know, 21, 22 year, the math team specifically threw out ideas. We talked about how should it be laid out? What should be included? The importance of it being consistent across both buildings in the elementary, the importance of it being consistent across the same course. If there's Algebra I in eighth grade, Algebra I in ninth grade should be using the same, right, the same curriculum, the same program, the same resource, even though it's children in two different program levels. We've started to talk about courses that needed to be modified or added or changed. And so then, as we started the 22, 23 school year, 612 had the luxury, and I give middle school, high school administrators all the credit for this, that they were able to fit into the schedule daily collaboration for those middle school, high school teachers. And so they, they were able to work throughout the year as whole teams, and we would go in at least weekly, sometimes a couple times a week, you know, administrator-wise, and work with them, talk to them about their progress, not just on the curriculum, but just with the, the resource rollout, with the assessment components. But a big chunk of that for 612 was developing and setting the timeline for the curriculum documents. K to 5, they do not have that daily period, but they did have, they have a half hour at the end of the day, which anyone in elementary setting knows that that half hour is very short, and a lot, a lot needs to happen, because they're also doing English, science, social studies. So we also, for their, you know, peace of mind, for their sanity, and for their understanding of what the curriculum process was, because some of the feedback I got from some teachers was, we don't really exactly know what it means to write curriculum or develop this document. And so they, each, each grade level on a rotation got half a day in the, in the morning, that I kind of went, rotated between the two buildings, so that each elementary got, you know, a chance to host, and, and just presented a little bit, hey, here's what we're kind of doing, here's some of the goals. And then they had several hours of uninterrupted time to really work on that. They also got some time during, you know, a couple of in-service blocks that was departmental or grade level time. And so the great thing is that anyone teaching mathematics, whether it's a kindergarten teacher, third grade teacher, secondary math teacher, they have access, you know, easy, direct access to all of the documents that we used to put this together, and they all have edit access as well. Some of the grade levels did it where they, they assigned a point person that's the actual editor, and then the rest of the grade level kind of feeds the information to them. But they all have the, the opportunity and the option to collaborate and to be part of the process. And, Mr. Wolf, if you'll jump on. So, what was the goal? Why spend all of this time? Why do this for, you know, two school years, essentially? One, we wanted to make sure we were accurately sharing information about what was being taught and when. If I'm a parent and I want to help my third grader, it's much easier for me to help them if I know when they're starting to learn multiplication than if I just have to guess. Or if I found out they learned multiplication because they came home and they brought home their times, you know, their multiplication assessment, and they struggled. And I, I may think, oh, I wish I would have known five weeks ago that they were starting multiplication. I could have done extra work with them at home. And so we want to give families an approximation of what their child is covering, what part of the school year. And again, this is not a, a black and white, I promise the teachers, I would emphasize that, that when we, when there's stuff in there about the pacing, it's an estimation, and we always, right, want families to consult with the teacher of like, hey, I see that you're about to start this unit on geometry, because it's the 14th week of school. How, you know, is that where you're at? Are you a week behind, or are you a week ahead? But, but prior to this, we, we felt like we didn't even have enough of an approximation for a family to easily be able to reference something and say, okay, you know, my child's about to start this unit. Fractions is up next. This is what they do at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. And so we just, we feel that having this in place will, will better support all our families, all of our learners, of what's coming up and what to expect, and certainly could, could be a powerful tool for, for us to use. We also, we wanted all of our K-12 teachers involved in mathematics to have a same understanding of what was happening, not only in their course or grade level, but to easily be able to look, if I teach fourth grade, hey, what did they do in third grade? What did they finish the year with? What might I need to refresh or review? And sure, they can go and they should talk to each other and communicate, but there are times if you might be at home in an evening, or it might be your prep period, but your neighbor in a different grade is in the middle of instruction, that you just need to have a way to look it up. And so now, they, they all have access to each other's documents. If there are teachers in the same course or grade across both elementaries, they're working from the same blueprint, the same game plan. They, they are consistent. We said that, we see this as something that could be wonderful, and, you know, since I've been involved with the induction for new hires, one of the big questions we get is, hey, like, what, so what curriculum should I be using, or what should I be working from? And so now, to be able to clearly say to them, hey, like, here's kind of, you know, the rough thing for your grade level, like, kind of start here, and this is the, this is the same map that everyone in your grade level is, is working off of. Same thing if a teacher changed to a newer grade level, they'll easily be able to go from fourth grade to third grade, or second grade to first grade, right, and be able to just pick up and understand where they should be roughly at, at any point in the year. And then finally, just connecting the assessment to the, the curriculum documents and the amount of time spent kind of on each reporting category from an assessment standpoint is another goal. So, finally, so this document. And the document itself, just because it does include from K all the way to AP Calculus and AP Stats, it is, I think it was 190 pages when I sent it to Laura the other day. And so I, I realized that's long. I won't meet Mr. Bonus's goal if I go through 190 pages. But I did want to talk about, a little bit about what's specifically in that document that's 190 pages. And so one is that it has for each grade and course, it lists the grade level standards, the eligible content, and the competencies that a student would be expected to learn, and it's kind of spread, paced out in the order that the grade level would be instructing it. So if you start at the top of a grade level, you would, the first box is what they're doing to start the year. The next box is what comes next. We also, and this actually was a suggestion from some of the teachers that was not initially one of the things we were going to include, specific content taught. And what that is, is basically just like a, a regular language without all of the, the numbers and letters. This is what a kid is doing in this unit or lesson. So whether it's, you know, counted double-digit addition or subtraction, whether it's multiplying fractions, there is a box for each section, each unit labeled specific content taught. And that's for a, a parent, a student, or an educator to easily be able to look at and say, okay, when I say I'm covering standard, you know, 3.174, what that really means is they'll be learning these specific skills. So it's just a way to, again, make it more accessible. We also listed out expected number of days spent on each topic. And again, estimated number of days, and what they're actually doing is they're, they're mapping on the, kind of the working documents, the teacher documents, they're mapping the actual time spent each year on a specific topic, and then they're going to, annually, they're going to look at that and see, were we on track? Were we off? Were there any adjustments that need to be made, so that it's as accurate as possible to the actual time spent. And of course, from year to year, that may vary slightly, because a particular group of kids may pick something up faster, or may take more time compared to the kids the year before. But kind of an estimate of, how long are we spending on fractions this year? How long are we spending on multiplication? And lastly, we tried to put some big picture overview, so that somebody at a glance could look at the, the entire list of, of what's happening in a greater course. And so, a couple examples, Mr. Wolf, if you'll click on to the next one. So for elementary, you can see, I know it's small and kind of hard to see. So they, theirs is kind of listed out their big picture overview and an overview map, that you see the colors, each color corresponds to the different mathematical categories, orange being your numbers and operations, which is your addition, your subtraction, your fractions, blue being the algebraic concepts, purple being measurement and data, and green being geometry. And so if you wanted to just look at, and this, of course, is just some of the school year, just because that's what would fit on the slide, but in the document itself, for each elementary grade level, you can look at all school weeks for the year, and what, roughly what content, what category, what topic they would be learning at that point in the year. So that's kind of your quick glance. And I actually, already this spring, got some use out of that, because a couple of times I was setting up observations of elementary math teachers, and I pulled the document that has this in it up, and I was like, oh, you just said you're doing a measurement and data lesson. That makes sense, because it's school week, you know, 29, and that's, that's where you would be. And it like, it was cool the first time I did it. It was, you know, again, I like this stuff. So, I'll go back real quick, Mr. Wolf. The one on the bottom left, so the secondary, and especially the middle school, they did theirs, I think, just kind of in a more, almost like a more secondary way, that it's like a table of contents at the beginning of their courses, as opposed to the, the visual map. And so I, it was important to me to let them have a little bit of flexibility, so that what they were building worked best for them, since they would be the one using it. But it's same concept of a bigger picture overview. And then on the right, that is actually the consistent standard structure for kindergarten through AP Calculus, that it has standards, the eligible content or competencies, the estimated pacing, and then the specific content taught. So that is just kind of one quick example of what's throughout the document. So, one more. So this is the last one. I said I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, go all, all on ELA adoption presentation, but, so, tonight, this is being presented, right, and, and we're looking for approval, so that we can start formally posting it, you know, for, for reference as the adopted curriculum document. But it's, it's not done, and I stress this to the teachers, it will never be done. The day that it's done is the day that we've fallen short of our goal, because they should be every year looking at it. And I was thrilled when we met with kindergarten, and one of them raised their hand, and they're like, this, I hope this isn't a bad question, but is this kind of like, this is kind of like our lesson plan, but even like, with more and better? And I said, no, that's a great question, and absolutely, like, if you're not utilizing this document as you're planning your instruction, then why'd we make it? And so the expectation moving forward is that the document will utilize it every year, and that it will continually be revised, continually be, you know, added to, tweaked. There were already, some of the grade levels came up with some stuff that I thought was fantastic of, hey, wouldn't it be great to include information about prior knowledge? prior knowledge needed to be successful in this section? Wouldn't it be great if we listed, you know, key vocabulary terms that are necessary for for success in this section? And so that's something now we can go back with everyone and say, hey, let's start working now that we've got the, you know, the the bulk of it out of the way and and kind of developed, let's start making it better. Let's start improving it. Let's start continuing to look at our scope and sequence. Did we, you know, just because the core resource started with this topic, does this seem like the best topic for you to start with knowing your students as the math professional in the room? And and we've even already had several grade levels, fourth and fifth, both ended up moving certain sections around so that they don't necessarily just start with unit one in the resource. In fourth grade, for example, they actually now will start the year with what's considered unit 13, which is geometry. And the reason for that was they didn't want to get so far into the year and have no background, no context. And then fifth grade, same thing. They moved a few things around. And I told them, please continue to be diligent about that and and structure it and set it up the best way for your kids, not just the exact way that it's spelled out. And so the next next step, right? We wanted to get onto a plan where we don't ever get off track with it again. We want to make sure that we spent all this time, all this work. We wanted to have a long-term plan. And so lined up with kind of our ongoing curriculum revision, curriculum development cycle, every time mathematics hits that D1 in that cycle, and so 26, 27 is the next time that would happen for mathematics, the document's going to be up at some point for your all's approval, even if there's been no changes since the last time you approved it, because we didn't want it to go more than five or six years without, you know, review for approval. Now, with that said, if there is an off-cycle year where there's been a significant change in a course or grade, like, let's say, a certain grade level said, well, we always did, the document says we do fractions in the first nine weeks, we're actually doing it in the third nine weeks now. That's a structural change that we don't want our official document to not reflect what we're doing. So there there's a good chance, especially like a year from now, right? Because this is the first year working or second year working with the resource. But first year after the document has been kind of developed, there's a good chance that next summer, we'll be asking for the another math approval because of that. Because if there are structural changes to the document, we don't want to be working off of a document that's not current. And I I would almost certainly think that a year from now, there will be likely another approval, especially for middle school, because grade six has is for the first time bringing in the sixth grade accelerated. In eighth grade, I believe, confirmation from the the principals to make sure of this, but they're going to be changing from the single period to to a different, a different schedule structure. And so those two grades have actually requested, if if you see them in the document, there's not a number for estimated days because they want to make sure that they're what they're putting in there is accurate to what's actually happening now that they have a little bit change in their core structure. So again, just because it says 26, 27, and just because the cover page says 23 to 27, that doesn't mean that 27 is definitely the only time, the next time you'll be asked to kind of take a look and and reapprove it. It just means that if we get to 27, it's always going to be asked for approval in that year. That way, we never get more than than five years away. So that's kind of what I wanted to share. And it's, you know, it's a work in progress, but we were pretty excited about it. We're proud of it. I actually shared what we'd been doing with another, a curriculum director in another IU1 district just yesterday, and they were, they were pretty impressed. And their district is just starting kind of the same process that we've just completed. So I I said, you know, if we can help and if we can can share anything about how we want about it, you know, we're happy to, happy to help. But anyway, that's the math curriculum document. And we appreciate your time and consideration. And and everybody, you know, just enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I can't emphasize enough the collaboration, cooperation, the work that was put in by the grade level chairs, department chairs, the administration, but especially Dr. Gotchran, as you can see, he has put himself into this. And thank you again, Dr. Gotchran. Next, we have, every year, our school safety director, Chief Zeminski, is mandated by the state to produce for the board a school safety report. The board has always felt that it's important that that report, to a certain extent, is actually shared then with the community so that you can see the measures that are taken here on behalf of the district to secure the safety and security of everyone that comes through our school. So today, Chief Zeminski is actually going to report out on that report that was last month to the board. Chief Zeminski?
Thank you, Dr. O. Board directors, as you know, I gave you the report last month. And like Dr. O said, you asked me to to kind of shrink that down a little bit and give us some updates to the to the people of the district. So here we go. So in 2000, in 2019, the the Sandy Hook Foundation got along, got some bunch of grants, and they put a program together called Safe to Say Something. It's a very important program. The State Attorney General's Office picked up on it. And since that time, the next slide. So that's kind of the the sum, the sum of it is to to tell us about harmful events and an anonymous way for people to give some information to us. And so I have the next slide, Mr. Welk. So here's some breakdown, some stats that we, I'm very pleased with this. And I I think that the biggest thing that pleases me with this is that our guidance counselors, when we go, we get the alerts on our phones or and we also get them in text and an email. And when we get that, our guidance counselors pretty much know about 99% of those already happening. So it's, it's quite often that that I come to Mr. Welk or I go to Mr. Healer, Mr. Bonus and say, hey, we have this problem. And they say, we know about it. You see primarily the numbers, they 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 kind of did our our COVID drop, and then they have risen back up again to be this school year, this past school year, excuse me, has our highest year to date. So we have 49 to date, and I'm very pleased that that kids are using that and and the community is using that to get tips to us. So.
Okay.
So we we formed a committee to to find some grants, and we worked on a grant. And so special thanks to Dr. Oberg, Mrs. Engelmann, Mr. Wilson, who's on with us tonight, Mr. McKee. We all got together and we put together information for our PCCD grant, which we got approved of that. And we'll be able to, with that, be able to make some some adjustments in our security posture. And one of the big adjustments we're going to make is we'll be able to purchase the NAV360 program. It's called NAV Prepare, a very efficient program that that allows us to be able to do threat detection, prevention, mental health awareness, some safety management preparedness, student accountability, and parent-student reunification. It has a lot of other spokes in it that that there'll be information we can pass on to local departments and also to to responding patrol agencies, far as PSB, Donegal, will be able to share information on all our buildings with those police departments that are responding through through EMS connection. And this program will provide us with that. It'll also store our our emergency operation plan in a digital form. So they'll be able to see exactly what it is. And a really neat spoke that I like of it, it, this program allows us to connect this with our staff and faculty. And so our staff and faculty will be able to see the EOP, they'll be able to see flip charts of of situations, and they'll be able to see exactly what step by step they need to do. So there won't be a process where they'll be pulling their hair out, like, what do I do next? Or have to find a little book that they that we made up for them to tell them exactly where to go and what to do. So if you've, most, most places have emergency operation plans, books at desks or fun offices, things like that. We have that same environment. This will be able to allow us to bring it to the e-world, and they'll be able to have it on their devices. And whatever device they choose, they're, we'll load it on their district device. And if they want to load it on their personal device, we'll allow them to do that. So it's a great program. A lot of school districts use it. And we're very pleased to be able to get it. Okay. So our McGuffey Safety and Security Committee, we're continuing to meet, actually, we'll be meeting quite regular once we get this program up and running so we can get our all that information loaded onto the onto the program. We'll be doing that as a task. So our Alice Train program, we're continuing. This will be the start of our seventh year with Alice, and we'll continue to give that to our staff and faculty as we do every year in our pre, in our pre-meetings before the start of school. We'll continue to review our physical security posture. Mr. McKee's a great asset to us with that. We do, he and I do a lot of walkarounds of the buildings, and he's, we get, we get, we get our steps in. So and he's also very receptive to the to Officer Liveheart and Officer Officer Demme down at Claysville. He's very receptive, walks around with those fellows and checks the buildings. And and I can't say enough about him. Just, he really helps us out a lot. We are continuing with our safety drills. We conducted two safety drills this past school year. We will conduct two safety drills this upcoming school year. We did two weather preparedness drills. We'll conduct two weather preparedness drills, and we conducted the monthly fire drills as we're required to do. And and we will continue to notify our families as we've done in all the drills to let you know that we're starting and we've concluded. I feel that's a good way to communicate and let everybody know what's what's going on. And and Dr. Oberg and the rest of the staff agree with me on that. So. Yep. And that concludes, we have 37 calendar days to the next school year. So yay.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
And thank you so much. I just want to say publicly, thank you to you and your team for all that you do to keep our children and all of our personnel safe.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you to all of those, Chief, Dr. Oberg, Mrs. Engelmann, Mr. Wilson, and Mr. McKee, for your hard work on securing that grant. What a blessing. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right. Last time I have, starting a few months back, I directed Coach Dalton to put together a team to look at the future surface playing facility for the school. Currently, our high school boys team for the last 10 years has used the Washington Wild Things. Over the course of the last school year, over the baseball season, the cost of using that field basically doubled. And so we wanted to look at, from a perspective of for the future of the high school baseball team, where we'd be over the next couple of years. And so they looked at, again, the Washington Wild Things, but they also looked at existing facilities that are within the McGuffey School grounds. I believe one of the members tonight actually is Mr. Kern, who will make the presentation on behalf
Thank you, Dr. Oberg. Before I begin, I want to publicly thank everybody that worked on this committee-wise, from the athletic director, Mr. Dalton, board members, Mr. Ross, Mrs. Liveheart, our head baseball coach, Mr. Link, our assistant baseball coach, Mr. Link as well, South Franklin Township representative, Mr. Stanek, and our supervisor of grounds, Mr. McKee. We all worked on this collaboratively, big words, sorry. And here's what we looked at. If you have your slides, we're actually going to jump around a little bit. Mr. Welk knows where we're going to start. We're going to start with the National Federation of High School Sports. Their field standards, what they ask for, the dimensions, left field, right field, 325 feet, center field, 400 feet. Here in the McGuffey School District, we have limited options when it comes to baseball fields of that size. We have a couple that come close to it. So that's what we looked at. So our first one was South Franklin. And I'll make this one pretty quick because Mr. Stanek at the last meeting said that South Franklin was going to pull out of it because of their youth baseball program. They were not going to be able to accommodate us and the dimensions that we would need. So that was a quick no from South Franklin. So that left us with two other possibilities, which was Claysville is our next possibility, which is McGuffey Community Park. And there's a picture of McGuffey Community Park. At McGuffey Community Park, the cost for our team there would be about $1,250 per year. That does not include the maintenance that we would have to maintain that facility. We would not have a gate revenue. Everybody would get in for free. The field dimensions are not compliant with the NFHS, so there would be some issues down there that we would have to correct. And speaking with Mr. McKee, we could do that. It's just better if we do it over a period of time and not all at once. The amenities, there's plenty of parking. Seating is limited on that field. If you're familiar with the big field, which used to be called the Legion Field in Claysville. So there's limited seating. The playing surface is not very great right now. The infield would have to be cut back some more. We'd have to make it a little bigger. There's a foul ball issue with the creek being right there. There's a flooding issue. There's numerous issues. There are no lights. Player safety, I think we're confident that we would be able to keep the players safe. So that's not a big concern down there. There's no scoreboard. There are restrooms, they're just not right at that field. You'd have to walk a little distance. No sound system. I do not believe there's any electricity running down to there. Right, Mr. McKee? Yeah, there's no electricity. There's no concessions. So at this point, it's not up to standards, what we would like for a high school baseball field, ability to transport the kids to and from, or the students to and from the school to the field. We're confident in that because it's not very far away. The last one, and this is the one we'll spend a little bit more time on, where we have been for 10-plus years, the Washington Wild Things Stadium. So it's been standard up until this point that the boosters have been paying that fee. That fee has increased over over time. Right now, we're at 900 per game. And I believe Coach, Mr. Dalton, they said that would be set for three years.
They would, they would extend their contract test for three years at $900.
So 900 per game. To give you, if you're not familiar with that, high school baseball, you can schedule, I believe, 20 a year, 22 a year. Usually, you try to schedule 50/50, home and away. But with this kind of facility, a lot of times, the non-conference games are going to be moved to the Washington Wild Things Stadium just because of weather. And we'll get that in that in a minute. Revenue per gate, it was around $700 per game for the season. So you do recoup some of the money there, the boosters did. The field dimensions are compliant, obviously. There's plenty amenities, parking, seating, playing surface, lights, player safety. There's a scoreboard, restroom, sound system. There are no concessions, but the boosters, I do believe, bring food items, hot dogs in a crock pot, whatnot, drinks, so they can recoup some of their costs at that point. And the ability to transport to and from the Wild Things Stadium, it is not an issue. That's fine. So why are we being asked from the boosters to take this on as a school district? It's just getting expensive for the boosters. But one of the, one of the biggest reasons is because it makes life a whole lot easier for our athletic director. If you have a non-conference game or even a conference game, and it's scheduled to be, say, at South Moreland on a Tuesday, and the weather has been bad and South Moreland's surface is not being, is not going to be ready to play, and they want to move it here to the turf field, Mr. Dalton currently doesn't have the authority to just okay that right now because the district's not paying for that. Mr. Dalton has to go to the boosters. The boosters would have to okay it and then get back to Mr. Dalton before he can even contact the umpires, contact the Whipple. So it's just extra steps that you have to go through now. Is I'm Mike correct? I'm saying that correctly?
You are.
Yeah. So one of the advantages, if the district takes over that cost, is Mr. Dalton has the ability to move any game he wants without prior approval from the boosters. So what we came up with as a committee as a whole is that what we're going to recommend to the board is that the district does start taking that over. The upfront cost to the district would only be what we would have to pay the gate worker to take the ticket money, per the union stipulations, correct? Yeah. So that would be the only upfront money for us. The Wild Things never bill for the stadium use until late July, early The Wild Things never billed for the stadium use until late July, early August.
If you beg them.
If you beg them. So, it's not billed until the very end anyhow. So, what we would do as a district is, the way we would finance this is, we would pay the 900 per game for the baseball team to play at the Wild Things Stadium. The revenue that we get for the gate would go 100% towards that bill. The remaining balance then would be billed to the booster organization. So, in essence, the only cost the district is paying as of now would be for the gate worker to take the tickets. And that could be negotiated to be billed to the boosters as well in the long run. So, and that's the committee's recommendation, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Jason, the average revenue per game, $700, is that what I'm understanding? Last year? Last year, what? So, when you said South Moreland, I'll use that word as example, if their field's not playable, they come here and we pay the $900 to play here, Mr. Dalton?
Well, if it would be two times, we would probably work out some kind of shared cost for day with day.
Yeah, because it-
If it would be one time, we would flip dates, that's what we would do. It really wouldn't change the-
Right.
...revenue. We would just say, we'll host tonight, and we'll come to you tomorrow when your field dries out or whatever.
Exactly. That's why I'm, so if they're in our section, one times our responsibility, the second times there should be.
Correct.
With this also, and the field at McGuffey Community Park, Mr. McKee and his team would still be keeping that filled up for the next three years so we can revisit this in three years and see if that field at McGuffey Community Park is ready to be playable, and then we'll revisit this issue in three years. So, we're asking you to do this for three years, not for five, 10, 15, forever, for three.
So, basically, we play 22 games, is that what we said, George? Know what we're doing, 22 game?
Twenty, so 10, basically 10 up where at home?
It would be reasonable to think that we can play 12 home games almost every year.
So, that's basically-
Those are independent teams. Shark or Chief Bittner is about those teams, they're like, play that. That said, those teams are a far greater revenue than what they're stating. They, they draw a lot more people to the event than our game against them.
So. So, let's say 12 games at $900, that's about 10,800.
Yep.
And 12 games at $700 is 8,400 approximately. And last year, we budgeted, what was it, $3,600?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five hundred?
Okay, but wait, before we go further, my understanding is, and I, and this is one of my questions, but it kind of dovetails with, with what Mr. Haynes is saying. My understanding is, we're not paying that. The most the district will pay is whatever is collected at the gate.
Correct.
The, the remaining balance will be billed to the boosters, correct? So, if, if-
We're in the process of setting up fundraising arms now that we have a policy with our alumni group and things like that, that we can target different things. And what would be helpful, I said?
But if we collect, if, if they collect, I don't know, $500 at every game, then that's the most the district will pay.
That is correct.
The balance will be paid by the boosters, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is this in writing somewhere?
Would the boosters have not agreed to this? The committee is, that's what their recommendation is. Now, one thing we haven't taken into consideration is the savings that the schools see by us going to the Wild Things. During the course of a year, we played 12 section games and eight non-section games. If we were at McGuffey Field and we played, had eight non-section games, they would all be away, which means you're paying for a bus. Right now, all of our non-section games are at home because when we go to talk to those teams and Mr. Dalton will tell you, where do you want to play? Home or at our place or your place? Oh, you're at Wild Things? We want to play there. So, the school's seeing a savings there, not to mention the prep of that field.
Well, I want to get into that because I want to know, what are we doing over the next three years? Because I keep hearing that the Claysville field isn't viable. So, what are we doing? What steps are we taking over the next three years to make the Claysville field viable? We are currently, correct me if I'm wrong, paying for the, for a baseball field and a softball field at Claysville, correct?
And we also have a middle school and junior varsity schedule, but we need a field to play.
Okay, so what steps are we ta, if, if, and even if we do this, what steps are we taking over the next three years to make sure that the Claysville field is ready so we're not going to be right back where we were this time?
We, we don't want to.
Sure.
So, for the past six years since I've been here, you know, we, we really concentrated mostly on the softball field at the park. I think Mr. Dalton will agree that softball field for having a, an all-loom infield and so on, that's a, that's a very nice field. We've got it contoured now that every time it rains, it's not a rainout and so on. We can get a great preponderance of the games in, on that field. So, the plan's the same thing. Now, we're going to focus, Mr. Dalton and I met with the park board, and, you know, I informed them, my focus now is going to move to the, the baseball field. And, you know, over the years, the outfield grass creeps its way in. That's one of our bigger issues. Where second base is right now, it's only about five feet from the grass. It needs to go out about 15 feet or so. It's not a, not a huge job, but, you know, I need 100 tons of infield mix that I don't need to do all at one time, that I can do over the next several years. We'll re-contour that field as well. The park is going to make some fencing available to us. We, we replaced some of it along first baseline in front of the dugouts. We'll do, put some new poles in and so on. So, you know, with the budget that we currently have yearly for that park, we think we can make some substantial improvements to that field. Will it ever be the Wild Things part number?
And it's not our field either.
And it's not our field. You know, we, we, it's not, wouldn't be prudent for us to soak, you know, $100,000 into a new, new fence. You know, it wouldn't be prudent for us to spend $50,000 to till up and replant the outfield and so on. But we can make improvements to it, to get it much closer to what it, to what it needs to be.
So, that's my ultimate question. When you're doing that over the next three years, and you're using the money that's available in the budget-
Yes.
-over the next three years to do that, in three years, will it be ready to be played on by the high school baseball team?
It will be as, as much NFHS compliant as we can make it, right? I can't move the outfield fence, right? I can't get them a 400-foot center field.
Move the dugts, the backstop.
Just not, not in the, or move the backstops, right?
So-
It just-
Proceeding.
I, I'm not getting an answer to my question. And will it be? The answer is no. Then why are we putting money into it?
Right. It still has to be, right? We still do JV and we still do middle school there, right? And it still needs the basic, you know, maintenance issues to get it back to really where it needs to be.
So, when we're paying $1,250 per year for, for Claysville Community, or McGuffey Community Park, that is for girls' softball and currently, right now, JV baseball.
Middle school mostly with JV, there'll be some JV next year.
Yeah. We have used the three, we actually have used the three fields by the contract if we need them. But we have, we have, in the past few years, we haven't used all three on a regular basis. We've used two on a regular basis, and the third occasionally, depending on weather and accessibility and so on.
The middle school schedule has been to the fall.
Yeah.
But if I'm hearing you correctly, in three years, we're going to be exactly where we are now.
But you want to know, so.
Which leads me then to the next question, which is, how is this not a Title IX problem?
So, I mean, Title IX obviously is, is kind of complex in the way that they look at your overall athletic programs. There's, there's some argument that, that in a sense, that your, your boys' baseball team now has actually a, a extra burden because they have to travel for all their home games to the Wild Things Stadium, and whether or not you consider that to be a substantial distance obviously is, is up to interpretation. But I, I mean, I think overall, the Title IX issue is probably secondary just to the optics of whether or not you're spending your money correctly.
Even if, if we would agree to this, we would be paying substantially more as a district towards a boys' baseball program than we would be the girls' softball program. That doesn't become a Title IX issue?
I mean, again, it's going to depend on more than just the field and what you're paying for it because, you know, if, if you can show, and I, I think that you do have some analysis here that, that shows that you've had people looking at this, obviously with an eye towards the Title IX issues, and your options are fairly limited. I would say at the same time, though, that it would behoove the district to have a long-term solution that doesn't call for this being an indefinite, possibly forever solution. So, I think that, that what you've done now certainly passes the smell test in terms of trying to, to get facilities that, that are, are appropriate for both your boys' and girls' teams. But if we're in the same situation five years, 10 years from now, that may not be the case.
And have we reached out to, maybe members of the committee can answer this, have we reached out to the girls' softball coach and boosters to ask them about their satisfaction with their facility?
Coach, right here, we're asking, correctly, I would say, I, I would say 13 games a year. I would say that our facility was in the top three that have been playing, like, I disagree with that. Our facility is suitable for top 10% of the-
I was looking, you know, like, are we going to down the road and have them suddenly say, oh, wait, we want what the boys want? Perhaps.
But it's the same issue, and we know, Mr. Kern, I missed a little bit too. If the park board changes their philosophy, you can-
I, I understand that.
We have no field again, and we actually kind of had it like that before.
I need, I, I need to speak up for one second. I'm sorry. I had sent, Coach, I had sent you an email and asked you specifically if the boosters were on board with paying the difference, and you sent back, they are on board with this.
From the meeting I had the other day.
And Mr. Ross just sat here and said, no, they are not. So, now, because I told, specifically said, I did not want blindsided sitting here at this meeting, and we are.
The be, the, the biggest point is, you know, I have a lot of confidence in Ed, in his fundraising ability. Now, he's indicating-
That was not my question.
He's indicated to us that he just feels very confident that they're going to raise the money to where the boosters won't have to do this.
That doesn't answer the question. What, what, based on that premise, what you're saying is, we could pass this, and the booster says, no, we're not paying the district, and then we're on, on-
The contract will say.
Well, well, I want to contract, I'm sorry, before I vote on anything-
Yep.
-I want to see it in print.
That's what we were going to do.
Because I was locked, dude. This is just too much back and forth.
Because originally, I thought we, we had a pretty good agreement. I laid it out. I sent an email, everybody concurred with the email, and we kind of changed our focus.
No, I don't think you got to finish your presentation as far as the sponsor, the new sponsor, the thing that you got, that is going to go to all athletics.
Correct.
And baseball's going to put number one because we don't have a field to play on, so that they would take care of that, and then there'd be a list of tennis gets this or soccer gets that or whatever. But I want to give you a few figures because I think you're globally underestimating the amount of money it would take to take care of an organic field. 90 by 90 foot bases, it's in a field, one inch of field mix, 57 tons, $50 a ton. It's almost $3,000. That's just for an inch. So, when it floods and all goes away, do it every year. The amount, it wouldn't be worth putting in a decent amount, same thing, it would go away. You'd have to get a bank one, $4,000 to $5,000. Honestly, we could pay $10,000 in rent and still be ahead to go to Wild Things for the next 10 years. The turf of field, softball and in baseball, is $250,000. Obviously, it's going to take more for turf or baseball, right? So, that's $175,000. At 10 years, you have to replace it for insurance, that's $17,500 a year. So, you're better off going and renting the field, not having maintenance, not having security. I mean, we're throwing good money after that. If you think you're going to be able to take care of an organic field, that's not ours, or build something that's $500,000, we don't have money for that. And even then, you'd have to replace it in 10 years. So, the financially responsible thing to do would be to go into Wild Things.
We, as, as a district, are financially strapped anyway. I sat here last month and made a decision to raise taxes against my better judgment because we are in such dire straits. I have always been committed to doing what's best for the district and for the students, the community as a whole. But we are in, in dire straits. We don't have the extra money. So, when we start talking about this, I'm not necessarily saying yes or no. I'm saying I want something in writing so that we know exactly what amount the district is going to have to pay, and if we're saying that the only thing we're ever going to pay is whatever's collected at the gate, then I want that in print, that we're never paying more than that.
Because in essence, by going in there and playing, playing, you're saving money, different saving lines.
I, I, you know what? We could argue that point all night.
Because you're not bussing them. You see, there are half the games in my section, or eight of them, you're getting $15,000 to $30,000, and the vainest to get out and get the field ready for 10 games. Let's say $2,000 to $2,500. Would you agree upon it if there was a short haul and get and raise the money, and you would back us up $2,000 or $2,500?
Again, I think we could argue this back and forth all night, but my understanding was that the committee was going to be looking at not just a short-term fix, but a long-term fix, and I'm not seeing that.
Can I add, go back in here a minute?
Yes, Mr. Haynes.
At our last McGuffey Area Revitalization Steering Committee, which Doc and I are part of representing the school district, I brought this issue up because part of what we, we're doing is providing grant writing services. In fact, Tyler, Assistant Coach Tyler Linkis, we, we're helping him write a grant for the South Franklin Park, and we, I brought up the baseball issue, and the, that, members of that steering committee are also part of the Claysville Area Business Association, and they felt very strongly they would like to have a facility in the district to be proud of, and they felt, those members in that association felt that the local business association would get behind this. So, I think this isn't short-term fix, this is long-term fix. You need to talk to the Claysville Business Association. One of the big problems and the hangups is, and he mentioned it just a few minutes ago, is the Claysville Park, the McGuffey Park Association, because they're not the easiest bunch of people to work with and want to understand. And, but, it's, it's, nobody was aware in Claysville, in the area, that this was an issue until I brought it up at the last month's meeting, and they felt very confident that the local business, especially now with our new advertising and, and stuff, policy. I mean, that was the one thing that Mr. Newton said, hey, I'll put a side up and we'll, we'll make this happen, you know? And if you want something to happen, give Mr. Newton to do it.
So, are you saying then, over the last, what, they've been going to the Wild Things for what, 11 years? Over that period of time, no one's had a conversation with Claysville saying that the field doesn't meet standards for-
We've had it five times.
Yeah, it's not, this isn't news.
We mentioned it, we were almost there.
This was going on while I was still teaching.
A little bit.
Yeah. This was going on while I was still in that-
Does anyone else from the board have any questions or comments?
I, I do. I, I want to be careful as, because of what Mr. Ross said, I, I, I think that's askewed in all due respect to Mr. Ross about the transportation being saved, because even though it is a home contest, we still have to provide transportation to Washington.
You don't.
Even if it's a seven o'clock, do we provide-
We do not. You have not provided-
I didn't say we have been providing it. I'm telling you-
It's just like a basketball game at seven o'clock. We do not provide transportation.
To an away game, you do, Jeff, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, away games, but not home games.
But-
The kids have to go-
Field is not even here on the district. It's not even in the district.
So, even if we haven't been providing transportation, we should be providing transportation.
Or an emergency waiver or a transportation waiver, saying it's okay for you to transport player acts, not, not five people.
Are we doing that?
What's that?
Are we doing that?
No, Mr. Kern just brought up, there's a reasonable solution to that.
It just doesn't make sense that a child, we play seven o'clock games, they would come from their home- come from their home, go to the school, then take a bus to McGuff, to Wild Things, then after the game have to get back on the bus at nine-thirty, ten o'clock, to go back to the school, to get into their vehicles, to go home, or parents meet them there.
But, but that's a separate thing. If they choose not to use the service, that's on them. If the school is offering the service, that's a different thing.
That's not a saving, saving's not on me. We can make it right.
Regardless, regardless of all of this discussion, we are exactly the same place where we were, which is we don't have anything in writing on which to vote anyway.
Well, the reason we didn't is we wanted to have a committee meeting first, and then we were going to go to the Wild Things, and Mr. and Dr. Ober was going to go to our solicitor and say, write up a contract that we can agree to, then take it to the Wild Things and let their solicitor look at it, and then when that was, that was finished in August, our move was to hopefully approve a three-year deal. That was our, that was my perspective from what Dr. Ober asked.
So we're not voting on anything tonight?
No. This is just in form on the direction that we wanted.
Well, I'd like to know what the rest of the board thinks, but for me, I will say this, when it comes to something that's presented to us for a vote, I want it clearly written that the board is not paying anything more than what's collected at the gate, and I want to know specifically by, by title or of organization in that same document, who's picking up the difference, because I don't want to get into this, well, we might do, raise this with fundraising, and it might be that, I don't want, we need to know specifics. Anybody else on the board?
I agree with that.
Well, I think before you can make an educated vote, you need all these numbers in front of me. I was doing the numbers in my head, and I know we, thirty-five hundred dollars this year is what we paid.
Three, four thousand dollars, hopefully if things were going well.
Is what we paid, and based on the numbers there, it's.
It wouldn't be very hard to raise four thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I need to see numbers in front of me, that's all I would like to see.
Can I add one last thing, because I was questioned about the transportation thing. I just, since Mr. Dalton's here, in the past, I'll use football as an example, you and I have coached teams where we have played a neutral site game where we were the home team at North Allegheny, correct? Yeah, we were the home team. Did we bus the football team there?
We didn't.
Did we expect them to drive there by themselves?
We did not.
So what would it be any different for any other sport?
I see, I see Mr. Ross's point there a little bit too, just because of the proximity of the Wild Things, but I understand, I understand your liability thing one hundred percent, but I understand it. As we do it for any second transport, whether they're going home, there's a sheet they give to the coach with their parent, if they're, if we're taking a standardized test and we need to get them to a facility and their parents are taking them, we give them a waiver for their parent to come in here, to sign them out, to take them to whatever the event. So this, this thing, if all in that same circle, it wouldn't be that different call, I think, to provide that document that they would do prior to for the transport.
I will tell you, the schools never provided transportation to the golf course for anything, practice after school or anything.
I think we did in practice when I first arrived here, but our problem in practice right now is there are no buses for practice. Our students basically leave at twenty minutes before the end of the school day during island of period, so we can get them to practice and the school bus driver can return.
So do we have liability waivers sign for that?
For?
Whoever's transporting the golf team.
Do we apply, they go after school, in our school district.
That actually would probably be handed to Mr. Wilson, and he's not here.
But there should still be, I mean, they're still, they're still traveling for school purposes, there should be a liability waiver for that if we're not transporting them, correct?
Correct.
And you're going to fall in a lot, there's probably thirty-five things that you're going to start talking about. There's a lot of things, there are, I'm just telling you, we can actually, we can look at it, but you have.
I'm sorry, I just thought that was standard operating procedure.
Yeah, I mean, let's, we can review those sport by sport with Mr. Dalton and report back to the board next month.
Thank you.
Sure about it.
And I do agree with you, Zoney, because like I said, I was told one thing before we got here and then get here, and it's totally different, I was told totally different, so I, like you, I want to see it in writing.
Yeah, it's just not at all what I thought the committee was doing.
Totally blindsided tonight.
And you were a member of the committee.
Yes. I was, when we had a meeting, I was the only one that was there.
Yeah.
Nobody showed up.
Thank you for the presentation.
Again, that is all I have for committee.
At this point, we're going to call an end to committee meeting at seven sixteen PM. We will reconvene for the regular meeting at seven twenty-five. I'm not happy, that's not at all what I thought was being presented. No.
I can tell, I mean, she's troubled. Yeah, I mean, if you want to.
Do you find anything else out?
Oh, I did find out he did.
We were told in the interview that that was put in the budget. So he was in that meeting.
Well, see, I never knew that. I heard Mark say he was going to.
Mark did say that after Mark left, we were told.
And I'll be honest, the last thing I remember is him saying in the interview that he was going to get part of the salary.
He said he was, yes, but then after he left, we were told that he was going to sit in his position, because he put that in the budget. So I remember the same thing. And he has not got anywhere with any, any clothes, or he's not dealt with that. He's not been paid since COVID, so. You know, would it end, would it stay out of it, would he move it back? See, here's, here's my issue. I was going to say, we looked at all these coaches, and when I submitted, and John submitted, all these people that were involved. Tyler, he put a step in there, which tells us to get paid for that. If I'm to look at this, all these people are getting paid, there's nothing here that says all this, well, right here, it's a cherry of all of them. So we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, seven, high school assistants. Our big thing is we've got high school sports.
Well, there's not, well, here's the thing, there's not, there's not a sport that high school motion doesn't have to be. But to your, to your concern, and I said the same thing, that's how they, that's how we always go. Show who's on staff, if there's like, say, it's a class, there's a person, there's two people watching, you should know where they're at.
I just had a really tongue creamer just flopping in my coffee, so I think some of the creamers are bad.
Actually, Ms. Heather, this is how, Director, she said, flopped it.
Price for a rush to get a new softball field, two point seven million dollars. So we're going ten thousand dollars to go to the field, we've agreed because we're going to do it. So we have this debate, this really isn't that big deal.
Right.